Package store licensed from 240 Main Street to 258 Main Street. The company doing business as Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirits.
Second.
And seconded, before the vote, just one quick point of reference. For informational purposes, where is 258 going to be located in the reconfigured Plaza? Is it straight back as part of the main building?
Pretty much straight back. It'll be just to the left of the new Market Basket Store.
Gotcha.
There'll be four or five stores just to the left of Market Basket. It'll be the first one closest to the Market Basket to the left if you're looking at it from the street.
Very good. All right, made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Not yet being 7:15, rather than moving to our scheduled agenda item for 7:15, why don't we move to Communications and then we'll come back.
Mr. Chairman, you have authored a memorandum to the Board regarding the Town Council contract for fiscal year 2010, enclosing a copy of the proposed contract for those services with Deutsch, Williams, Brooks, Durensis, and Holland for the period July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010. And quoting from your memorandum, you say, as you will note, "The terms and conditions of the contract are the same as the current agreement with the exception of the change in named council from Paul Durensis to John Foskett and the dates by which the contract shall be in force." And you further go on to indicate that it is your intention to bring this matter to a vote at the Board's meeting on June 22, 2009.
Next item?
The Board has a memorandum from me that was sent to them along with the Water and Sewer Commission regarding the MTBE Products Liability Litigation. I'm advising you that the town is in receipt of a settlement check for the net proceeds. In accordance with your prior approval, the settlement made with Lion Dell Chemical Company, the total net proceed made payable for deposit to the Water and Sewer Department is $902.2. This amount is in addition to the previously reported payments of $858,712.12, which resulted from the town's prior settlements with other defendants involved in the MTBE Products Liability Litigation. And the Board is well aware of this. We've had many discussions. The town is among the 80 Massachusetts Public Water Providers and hundreds of others nationwide that participated in this class action lawsuit. Also wanted to bring to your attention the fact that the Board received reimbursement for the December 2008 ice storm from FEMA for cost related to that storm. And I would point out that thanks to the prompt and thorough efforts of Don Onisite, who will be here a little later this evening, the town was able to secure the reimbursement in the amount of $24,695.52 during the current fiscal year. And the significance of that is that because Mr. Onisite submitted a comprehensive document in a timely manner, it enables the town to meet all of its financial obligations that are consistent with the fiscal year 2009 budget. Wanted to inform the Board that Fox 25 is coming to Wilmington. You may know that every Friday from the end of April to the end of August, the Fox 25 Morning News broadcasts from a different community. This remote broadcast is referred to as Fox 25 Zip Trip, and it is scheduled for Wilmington on July 3, 2009. The news team will broadcast from the Town Common from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. on that particular day, and they will feature various aspects of the Wilmington community. The producers of the program will determine who will participate in the live broadcast, although residents and anyone else interested are welcome to view the program from the sidelines right at the Common. We've also been advised that Fox 25 will be collecting books for their children's book drive, and all of the books collected go to Reach Out and Read, which is a literacy program for children. So if you're not familiar with this program and you want to take a look at it, it is on broadcast on Fox and from different communities every Friday morning. They will be coming into town very early on that day, probably between 3:00 a.m. and 3:30, and we will make arrangements for them to set up their broadcast equipment. And then they'll break down right at 9:00 a.m. and be probably leaving Wilmington by 10:30. It's my understanding from what they've indicated to us that they do all of the research into the town, and then they extend invitations to various folks, whether they be businesses or restaurants or shops or organizations, et cetera, to join them at the broadcast. So all of that is handled by them. The town really doesn't have any input in that as far as I am told. But again, it's on July 3 at the Common from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. The Board has a copy of correspondence that they received from Paul Regan, the Executive Director of the MBT Advisory Board, and Mark Grayson, the Executive Director of MAPC Regarding the Municipal Elections, the Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organization. As the Board is aware, the various chief elected officials, either the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen or Mayor of the specific town, is invited to participate in the election where officials will be representing all of the communities, both towns and cities, on the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization, which reviews all the various public works-related projects. The Chairman has already cast the ballot on behalf of the Town of Wilmington, and we'll await to hear the results. There were different ways in which the ballot could be casted, either in person tomorrow or by an absentee ballot, which is what most of the communities utilize, as did the Chairman. We also have a letter from Catherine Dunphy, the Chairman of the MWRA Advisory Board, who wrote that the Advisory Board's integrated comments and recommendations have been approved unanimously relative to the MWRA's proposed fiscal year expense and capital improvement budget programs. And they're indicating that they are in touch with the MWRA Board of Directors and challenging them to take on a strategy in the context of the two recommendations, which are to lower capital spending by no less than $100 million over the next four years and to reduce rate revenue requirements by that same amount over that same period. And so they are just indicating this information and noting that the authority has already maintained tight control of their expenses and urging them to continue to review ways in which they can reduce costs for ratepayers. Want to continue?
Actually, we can revert to our scheduled appointment items. And our 7:15 is scheduled with Lucian DiStefano of Bowler Engineering on behalf of Amerata Hess Corporation as regarding an application to increase underground storage of flammable license. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, Luke DiStefano, Bowler Engineering, 352 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. Basically here tonight to correct what I would refer to as an oversight in association with the existing Hess facility at 273 Main Street. We had appeared before the town numerous occasions back '03, '04 when we were rebuilding that location. I'm sure everybody on the Board may be familiar with that facility and its old state and how it is today. Back as part of that reconstruction effort, new underground storage tanks were installed at that facility. However, during the process, the underground storage tank license was never amended to reflect the 40,000 gallons of total underground storage currently on site. In an effort to get all of their paperwork in order over the last year, Hess came across this issue, realized they had a permit for 24,000 gallons of underground storage, and wanted to obviously amend the location, amend the license, that is, and make certain that the site is in full compliance with all the regulations. In order to do that, however, as required by law, we needed to appear before this Board to amend the current UST license and get the additional 16,000 gallons of underground storage. We submitted that application seeking the amendment. That application was reviewed, and I ultimately believe signed off by the Fire Chief and referred to this Board for final approval. It's the Board of Selectmen's charge to grant either new underground storage tank licenses and/or amendments when you're seeking an increase in underground storage. Beyond that, there are no changes to the facility proposed at this point. The tanks have been in the ground since September of 2005. We are aware of no issues at the location. They are fully compliant with all the current federal, state, and local regulations in terms of overflow protection, spill containment, audible and visual alarms, double wall fiberglass tanks. So they meet and/or exceed all of the current regulations as they did when they were installed a little under four years ago. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions the Board has or members of the audience.
Do we have anything from department heads? I know we've got a memo here from your office to the Chief, and there appears to be a note back from the Deputy Chief.
We also have a response from the Fire Chief as well indicating that he recommends approval, as does the Building Inspector, and as reported by Mr. DiStefano. Yeah, as reported by Mr. DiStefano, it was accurately stated, this is really a housekeeping issue at this point, and they have been in full compliance, and it really was probably an administrative error that we wanted to get corrected as we go forward. The Fire Chief and the Deputy Chief have been working with the Town Clerk to review all of the flammable licenses, and it's very likely we may even have one more coming down here for an administrative correction. But the important point to make in talking with the Chief and the Deputy is that they are in full technical compliance, and the Fire Department has been well aware of what they've had stored there. So this just kind of closes the loop, if you will.
Any questions or comments from the Board? Questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Make the motion to grant the license to increase underground storage to 40,000 gallons of gasoline, oil, and diesel fuel at 273 Main Street, Hess.
All seconded. Made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Did you send out cards, green cards?
Yes, we could have them. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
With that, we can move to our next scheduled appointment item with Donald Onisite, DPW Superintendent. It's regarding the refuse and recycling program update and an introduction of the single-stream recycling to Wilmington. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. As you indicate, I've been asked to come here tonight to talk about our recent updates, if you will, in our solid waste program. I wrote a memo to the Board to kind of highlight where we've been over the past year, what we've been doing on refuse disposal, refuse collection, and recycling. The first item, just to give a summary on, is our refuse disposal. We joined with an informal collection of communities about a year ago to look at whether we thought there'd be some benefit in having a collective consortium procurement, not a bid, but a procurement, for our refuse disposal. Our current contract, or our existing contract at the time, with Wheelbrader North Andover had another year to run. It would run through the end of fiscal year 2010. So we had plenty of time to look at this. We all went, all the communities went into this process with the understanding and realized that each community would be making its own decision that it felt was in its best interest. And we thought there would be an advantage to acting collectively, and I think it did work out for us. We did have two proposals, both from waste energy plants, both in the Merrimack Valley area. One was Covanta, and the other is our current facility, Wheelbrader North Andover. We went through the RFP process, received those proposals, did some negotiating with those two companies, and, you know, we felt we had a, you know, a better initial proposal from Covanta, but through the negotiation, negotiating process, we ended up with what we felt was a far superior proposal from Wheelbrader North Andover. And the Town Manager made that decision to sign a contract for other communities that were part of that group also decided to go with Wheelbrader. And we ended up with a proposal contract for this coming fiscal year of $64 a ton for disposal. And we have a five-year contract following that. And that proposal, just this coming, that contract, just this coming fiscal year, will save the town approximately $95,000 over what we were planning to spend for refuse disposal. The total contract will save the town approximately $147,000. On the refuse collection end, we were at the end of our contract term that we had begun in 2003, went out with a request for proposal for both refuse collection and recycling collection. The refuse collection was more or less a continuation of the current program. You know, we would have the daily pickup, curbside pickup, and also the eight weeks of yard waste collection at curbside. We received six proposals, and the top proposal was from Northside Carding of North Andover, which was a very favorable price for us. It's a good company that has a lot of municipal experience, do a lot of similar communities to Wilmington, and we, the Town made the decision to award the contract for refuse collection to Northside Carding at a price of just under $535,000. And that was almost a $200,000 savings from what we're currently paying for refuse collection. The same request for proposal included a component for recycling collection, curbside recycling collection. We did allow for options, as we've previously discussed with the Board of Selectmen, one for dual-stream recycling, which is our current program. That basically is a separation of the commingles, you know, the aluminum cans, the plastics, from the paper. We went out with a request for proposal for that option, to continue with that option. We also asked for proposals for single-stream recycling, which a lot of communities are turning to. It's a simplification of our current curbside, and that would be essentially no separation. Everything could go in one container or multiple containers. You would no longer have to separate cardboard and paper from commingled and plastics. We received a proposal, a good proposal, that was slightly higher than the existing dual-stream. This is for single-stream again. And when we really considered what we were trying to accomplish, short-term and long-term, we felt that that was really in the best interest of the town. We feel it does, you know, make the recycling program a little bit easier for people, and we feel with that, that no longer that need to separate out items, we should see our recycling component increase over time. So we, the manager awarded the contract to Russell Disposal of Somerville, their current curbside collection contractor, and will begin with that single-stream program beginning July 1. As I indicated in my memo, once we made that decision to go with the single-stream collection, we began an educational program. We've sent out our cards, our calendars, you know, providing the notice that the town will be going single-stream. We have sent out notices that were part of the water and sewer bill. We have notification on our website, and we'll continue with that educational program over the weeks and months ahead to get people on board with this new, easier recycling program. One thing that's important to note is if people don't get the word, or we've even had some calls from the public where people kind of like separating paper from plastics, if they want to continue doing it that way, you know, that's fine. You know, as long as they comply with all the existing requirements of the town, they can continue to separate our recycling contract, or we'll pick up those recyclables curbside as they do now. You know, the last issue I'd like to just touch on is I was here before the Board of Selectmen in late November to talk about the so-called waistband, the enforcement of the town's recycling bylaw, which requires that recyclables not go in the regular trash. We began an educational program in January. We've started to actually ticket and leave items behind that are visible recyclables. And since you compare the quantity that the town is picking up curbside from January through May, we have seen our total recyclables increase, the quantity, rate of recycling increase by about 15%. So we feel we're on the right track with that, and over time, we feel, you know, with the single-stream program, with the continuation of the enforcement of the town's recycling bylaw, we'll increase that recycling quantity and we'll save the town the funds for the disposal fees. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the Board?
Sounds like we're on the right track and doing what we need to do for, as far as the community goes, not only for the environment, but obviously to save on some tax dollars. And I'm not sure we hashtagged, and I know some folks out there are kind of concerned. Let's say I want to clean my cellar or my attic. What do I do with all my stuff? Can we just touch upon that? I mean, on what happens, what they need to do? Are they going to be able to bring the stuff out to the end of the street, the end of the driveway? Because I know people do that. They annually clean their attics and cellar, and I don't think anyone up here is no different.
The Town has been, I would say, more lenient than most communities with that. You know, we do allow for, you know, that type of cleanup. We do allow for one large item per week, you know, like, you know, something that's lobble in the trash, like a sofa, a piece of furniture that can fit in the trash. We allow for that. We have had some issues and some problems with construction debris. Construction debris is banned from the waste stream. That's a state ban. It has to go to licensed facilities. It cannot go to a facility like Wheelbrader North Andor, or Covanta for that matter. And one of the benefits of Northside Carding's contract with the town is we are in discussions right now looking at allowing Wilmington residents to use that facility for a small cost. Northside Carding has a brand-new construction debris facility up in North Andover, and, you know, that would be an option that we cannot provide right now where people, Wilmington residents, could go to that facility, show proof of residency for Wilmington, and be allowed to use that for a small fee, that they would pay directly to Northside Carding. So we feel that's something that should help people out because we do get a lot of calls about, you know, what do I do? I did a small project in my house, and what do I do with this construction debris? And right now, we don't have a place for those people to go. We just, you know, they have to handle that privately. There are private companies that will take that, but, you know, this might help them out a little bit.
My question that I had, in terms of the corrugated cardboard, I've been pretty diligent in trying to do the recycling program, the current one, and I think the single-stream is going to make things a lot easier for a lot of people. The corrugated cardboard and the limits on the size with two and a half feet by two and a half feet, is that driven by their ability to collect it curbside and to transport that, or is that driven by wherever it goes, they need it that small?
It's driven, as I understand it, by the ultimate site for the recyclables, the processing facility. You know, the two and a half feet is, you know, there is some flexibility, some leeway there, but generally has to be in that size, you know, has to be broken down into that approximate size for the facility that accepts our recyclables to process it.
Yeah, that, to me, is the toughest part. I'm constantly chasing that and stockpiling it. I can't keep up with taking the time, but, you know, everything else is pretty much a matter of habit, getting yourself in habit of doing it, but that actually takes a little bit of, a little bit of doing. I think that's the toughest part. It's driven by the end product, and I guess I don't see any way around it, I guess. Anybody else?
A brief question, by way of clarity or clarification. The current bins we have now, keep on using those?
Different years.
The green recycle bins. I have two, meaning I'm probably a good recycler in that I fill one up fast. And so currently, we're filling up two of those bins, and that includes the, you know, I have been separating the paper from the, from the plastics. So what accommodation, or at some point, you know, if residents grow beyond their filling one or two bins, is it just keep on filling them? And we want to reinforce, keep on recycling, but is there a limit to this?
There's no limit. You can use as many of the smaller bins as you would like to use if that's convenient for you. A lot of people, it's more of a problem with, you know, if they have a larger storage bin, where do they put it? But we have seen a, an increase in people getting the larger bins, you know, and I think particularly with the single-stream recycling, that will, that will become more prevalent. So there's no, there's no limit on minimum size. The maximum size is something that it really has to be, you know, within the, you know, what one individual can pick up. We generally look for a 35-gallon container that's filled with recyclables, being something that can be handled at the curb.
The larger bin you referred to, are those available at the department?
Right now, no. We still have the smaller bins, which we sell to the public. The larger bins are available at places like Home Depot and Lowe's, and they can purchase from there.
I just want to make a point, though. The homeowners can use the same rubbish barrel that they're using now. I mean, most of them have more than one rubbish barrel, and they can designate one of them for recycling. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, what we're asking...
With a heavy marker or with a sticker, or just designate it for recycling, and you don't have to go out and buy a special...
I didn't know that.
Yeah. So I think that's one of the points I think we've got to be stressing. People don't have to buy something special. They can just put it in a regular trash bag, barrel, as long as that that's the only thing they put in there.
Correct. And we do have stickers. We've had such a run on them that we've run out. We've gone back order. We have stickers, recycling stickers, that people can pick up to put on their larger bins, and that will designate it as a recyclable bin. But they can, they can mark them themselves. They don't even have to mark them, as long as, if they're not marked, if they have the cover off, so it's clear and separated from the trash, so it's clear to the two contractors, you know, what's trash and what's recyclables. You know, we're not that, that particular. Just need to know, you know, what's trash and what's recyclables.
Yeah, I'd like to just echo what's been said here. I think it's definitely moving in the right direction with these contracts, and I think our... our tonnage from waste is going to go down a lot more than if we've got 15% since we've started this, the original of enforcing the law. Single stream is going to make it so much easier for everybody. And just to let everybody know again, like if you, somebody borrows your bin and doesn't return it, you can go down to DPW and pick up one of the small ones now?
Buy it.
Are you, yeah, buy one?
Yes.
Okay.
We're selling those for $5, which taking a small loss on that, so we may have to reevaluate that because we're selling, you know, we used to maybe sell about a couple dozen of these a year. Once we began the recycling and people had at least one bin, you know, we almost had no call for these bins. We can't keep these in stock fast enough.
Yeah, that's great.
People are purchasing these.
No, just to touch upon, thanks, Mr. Chairman. What the town manager said, I mean, we drive around town, I've seen some folks with regular barrels and they have a word recyclable on it. I mean, obviously with these little bins, you've got a bunch of soda pop bottles in a big windstorm, they blow all over the neighborhood, you know, and, which is a good point, I think more folks, now that we can put cardboard and paper and plastic bottles all together, I think people would probably have a nice, clean, decent barrel with the words recyclable on it and, you know, and, you know, maybe folks will keep it in, you know, their garage, you know, and I think it'd be, I think an advantage to everybody in town, just that one bigger barrel, 35-gallon barrel, that's what we're looking at. Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, just nice work on the FEMA reimbursement, too. The town manager stated you did your due diligence to get all the paperwork and everything.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Is that it from the board?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I have, it's a sort of related issue, or at least it's related to recyclables, but it's not necessarily the single stream program. I just, a couple of residents approached me two weeks ago, it was a Saturday. I have young kids that play in the youth soccer league, and it's at the Shawshin Fields. And they said to me, these concerned and conscientious residents, you know, we should be doing something about recycling here. And I have to admit, I'm a little embarrassed that I never really thought too much about it, but the opportunity is great there. As you guys can probably imagine, there's a ton of people there from seven in the morning till six at night, there's games throughout the day, all day, and a lot of people there. And most of the people there bring water bottles, usually the, you know, the store-bought ones, and the kids all have their bottles and the concession stands selling various products there. And we, the town does a great job of having trash receptacles available to, so there's no litter by any stretch of the imagination, but the trash receptacles are being filled with trash and recyclable plastic. And these residents were saying, boy, you know, it seems like we're not walking the walk here a little bit. And so they have taken it upon themselves this past week, and I haven't connected with them, so I'm not sure to what degree it was successful, et cetera, but they were, they brought their own little green bins and spread them around the field, and we're encouraging parents and kids to throw their recycling, separate it. So I'm not asking necessarily for an action plan, I'm suggesting that I think we, as a town, if we're going to be reinforcing this bylaw and asking our residents to participate more fully in a recycling program, I think we ought to be looking for a way to accommodate, not only, I bring up Shawshin Field because it's one that I'm familiar with, but I suspect this is happening at other fields around town. In fact, I know what's happening right in back of us during baseball season. So maybe there is something, I don't know if you've looked into this, if you want to address it now, that's fine, if not, maybe we could look into this going forward. I'd like to see us do something as a town and kind of walk the walk and live by, you know, the rules that we're kind of enforcing upon the residents.
Sure. This is something that we have tried, and we've tried, you know, with different events and different ways, and the problem we've found is when we put out the recyclable, recycling bins that are clearly marked, you know, with stickers and labeled, a lot of people generally don't tend to pay attention to that, so a lot of trash gets in there and garbage gets in there, and so the whole load of recyclables becomes contaminated. And it's either a real mess to separate and sort out, or it just all goes in the trash anyway. We have looked at other ways to do it, you've probably seen in some cities like Cambridge where they have the trash bins downtown and the recyclable bins that you can only fit a can or a bottle in. And we've looked into those, those are kind of difficult to maintain, and they're very expensive to purchase. They're, believe it or not, they're about $2,000 apiece, you know, for one container.
I'm not suggesting that.
So that's a little bit beyond what we think we can spend for that, but I certainly would be happy to work with the soccer folks about trying to police that, you know, try it again, try it on a limited basis, see if we can, you know, get some internal policing, if you will, from the soccer folks, and, you know, we'd be happy to work with them and try this again.
I think that's an important component of it, is, my understanding is that the people that run the soccer league are now really receptive to this, and if, you know, if they can really, because now with email and everything, there's a lot of communication that goes out from the league out to the parents and to the people that are involved. So if they really pushed it and reinforced it and communicated it out to the parents that have come to this, in conjunction with some sort of a program that we could implement, I think that we'd have a better success rate. I mean, you know, what about just a trash barrel with a lid that has a hole the size of a can? I mean, it doesn't have to be a $2,000 trash can, does it? I'm just, that's where my brain's going. I don't know, I don't want to overthinking or underthink it, but...
We can come up with a plan to give it another, give it another try, certainly.
Well, that's fine. I think they, those parents are probably trying, if they haven't already, will be making an effort to communicate with you, and I just ask you to be receptive to that, and if we can come up with something, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sure. You're welcome.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We are at the Comcast, what are communications?
We are. Just a notification from Comcast regarding the channel lineup changes. Effective June 26th, they're making changes to digital channels that'll be moving from the digital starter service tier to the expanded basic service tier. And they'll also be making other changes from digital classic and digital preferred packages to the digital starter package. And they're also notifying you that the Hallmark Movie Channel on 199 will be added to their digital starter tier. All of this information, rather than go through unless you wanted me to, Mr. Chairman, each of these changes and channels, all of this will be sent out to each of the great payers from the Comcast who have Comcast cable, but they are required to notify the board.
There's no need to go through those channels.
The board is being asked to consider the approval of Hawk and Pedal licenses to Dean A. Manamanis and Rachel E. Manamanis, who operates summertime Sunny Boy Ice Cream. I would recommend that the board consider their approval, but only contingent on both of these individuals receiving the approvals from both the Board of Health and the Police Department. What's happened here is they are the high bidder for the Silver Lake concession that we bid out each year, and they are coming forward now seeking their licenses. They have to have all of these licenses in place before we can award the bid. I expect that they will be able to meet all the criteria of the Board of Health and the Police Department, but in order to be timely, if the board would consider voting their approval contingent upon the review and approval by the Police Chief and the Health Director, that would help us in terms of making sure that there is somebody at the lake who's qualified to meet our concession needs.
When you say the Police Department, I assume they do a core?
They do it, yes, they do a check.
Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make the motion, grant the license contingent, the outlines set up by the town manager, the Police Department.
I'll second.
Police and Health, right?
Health.
Made in seconded, anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Board is being asked to consider a request to change a name on a flammable license from Edart Trucking to Modern Concepts LLC. Again, this is just as it says, it's simply a change in name, there's no change in flammable requirements, and it has the recommendation of the Fire Department, the Fire Chief specifically, as well as the Town Clerk.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I would move that we approve the name change from Edart Trucking, is that correct?
Yes.
From Edart Trucking to Modern Concepts?
Modern Concept LLC, yes.
Made in seconded, anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
And the Board of Assessors also had to weigh in on that and approved it as well. Chairman wrote to the members of the board a memorandum that was reviewed at the last meeting regarding the town manager's reappointment, noting that in 2006, the Board of Selectmen reappointed myself to this position for a term of three years, and those three years expire on June 30th, 2009, and he was recommending that the board take up the matter of the appointment at this particular meeting on June 8th. And that's what's before the board right now, the consideration of the town manager's reappointment.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I make a motion that we, I don't have it right in front of me yet, I make a motion that we reappoint the town manager, I don't have the exact, I was just going through other information at the same time.
Right here.
The dates, if you want me to be specific. I make a motion that we reappoint the town manager, Mike Kira, for a term of three years, effective July 1st, 2009, and to extend it through June 30th, 2012.
Seconded. Made in seconded, anything further?
I would just quickly say that I believe we ought to make the reappointment. I don't think that there's any concerns or objections from the board at this point in terms of the contract. We'll take that up, we'll figure that out at an incoming meeting, how we want to proceed with that.
Any other questions or comments? A motion's been made, it was seconded, right? I heard a second, made in seconded, all in favor? Unanimous?
Congratulations. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, I appreciate the vote of conference.
Public comments, public comments, yes, Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've noticed in the local papers lately, there have been some announcements about modifications to the Lowell Regional Transit Authority's bus that goes from downtown Lowell to Tewksbury. They've added the Wilmington train stop to that bus service. And I'm curious about that because one of the papers mentioned that this was at the request of the town manager and the Board of Selectmen of Tewksbury, and yet, I haven't looked up the dates, but a couple of years ago, or a year ago to two years ago, the Wilmington Board rejected that proposal unanimously. And I'm just wondering what has transpired to make that happen?
Good question.
The first I heard of it, the, we are part of the, I guess I need to read the papers more carefully, I, we are part of the MBTA district and are not a part of the Lowell Regional Transportation District, and I would think that this board would take a position in opposition to that unless they were providing a service to the town of Wilmington, and I know of no service that they're providing to the town of Wilmington, and I'm surprised, frankly, that we wouldn't have been notified.
I have, I was, I had this, I had the same thoughts, so I, you know, I went into it a little bit, I cut the schedule, another copy of the schedule, the latest changes in the map, and their proposal, or what they're doing, because they are running the buses, what they're doing is exactly what they proposed. They stop at several stops between Lowell and Tewksbury, a couple shopping centers, et cetera, and then they drive straight through Wilmington to the train station and stop there, turn around and come back. And there are no other stops proposed in Wilmington, no service at all that's mentioned. In fact, in fact, they don't even mention it in their, they don't even mention it as a place. It's just Tewksbury Bus 12, I guess it is, and then at the end, it shows that it goes to the Wilmington train station. And it goes to the train station, and he sits there for a few minutes, and he leaves. We asked him if he waits for specific trains or anything, he said no. So...
I don't know, I mean, I suppose the only benefit for Wilmington would be if it meant less people were bringing their automobiles to the Wilmington train station.
Right.
But it would seem to me that they should have consulted with us, and as the chairman so directs, I'd be happy to inquire and find out what's going on, and I would think we would want to consider whether or not, you know, there's a quid pro quo here, you know, if they want to come into the town of Wilmington with their bus, and maybe they should be picking up passengers who may in fact be from Wilmington and taking them to Lowell, if that's what they are interested in.
Well, I remember at the time, that was one of the major things. Yeah, and at that time also, that's right, at that time, it continued from Wilmington down Burlington Ave, but now it turns around and goes back to Lowell.
Off 38.
I'm not aware of it, I just knew that in the past, they were coming just into Wilmington slightly only to turn around at the furthest...
They don't even make that stop anymore.
Yeah, at the closest operation.
Mr. Chairman, I've talked to a few people in town, I wasn't sure what line or the LTRA, but they do stop, he will stop if you're on the side of the road in a fairly safe area, he's not just going to obviously stop in an intersection and pick somebody up, but he will stop and pick up passengers.
In Wilmington?
In Wilmington.
But he has no, that may be, but the point, that may be, but the point is that they don't advertise any stops, so that you can't plan on going to a stop at a specific time and catching a bus. Maybe what you're proposing is you just stand around on Route 38 and wait for the bus to come by.
No, that's not what I'm proposing, but I'm just telling you, I've heard from a couple residents, stop right at the biggest intersection and just stop the bus. He tries, what do you do then, he tries to...
Okay, I just thought I would bring it to your attention.
Thank you. LITA, see what their version of the story is, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you. New business or committee reports?
I just want to let residents know that on June 13th, the town beach opens at Silver Lake, and by that I mean lifeguards will be available Monday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then on Sundays from noon to 7:00 p.m., the town beach is open free of charge to Wilmington residents. Others, for a nominal fee, can either purchase a season's pass or a day pass to use the beach if they're not from the town of Wilmington, and they do that either right at the lake or through the Recreation Department. On June 13th and 14th... June 13th and 14th, the Wilmington Arts Council will host at the Arts Center the 29th Annual Art Exhibition. The Arts Center is located at the Old Town Hall on Middlesex Avenue. And the June 13th, Saturday date, the program runs from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And on Sunday, June 14th, it's from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Wouldn't, want to note also, on June 14th, there is the flag retirement ceremonies from the Wilmington Minutemen. They're conducting their annual ceremony at the Minutemen Headquarters at the Hinden Tavern at 3:00 p.m. on June 14th. And the public is invited to bring any of their flags, the United States flags, for a, an appropriate retirement. They do that through a ceremonial burning. On June 18th, the next meeting of the Junction Route 93 Development Area Task Force will be held here at the Wilmington Town Hall at 8:00 a.m. Wilmington hosts that meeting. And note that it's not at the Public Safety Building. If you are interested in attending, it's here at the Town Hall. And the following Thursday, June 25th, will be the public workshop for the Route 93 Tri-Town Interchange Project, which the board learned more about at their last meeting from Mrs. Hamilton. That is a public meeting, and it will go from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. here at the Town Hall on June 25th. And just to remind folks, the Fourth of July festivities begin on July 1st, and they run through July 5th at the Town Common. And Wednesday through Sunday, the Family Day at the Town Common is on July 4th itself, a Saturday. And the spectacular fireworks will be held on the Sunday, July 5th at the Town Common. If any, I doubt anybody is going to remember this phone number, but I do want to mention to you that if you're interested in learning anything about the actual events, the Fun on the Fourth, they do have a website, which is www.funonthefourth.com. And they have a phone number where you're directed to call 978-657-8081. And that's it. Oh, and also, I do want to mention that on June 21st, the Pan Mass Challenge Kids' Bike Ride will be held. That's become an annual event here in Wilmington where they raise money similar to the major Pan Am, Pan Mass Challenge Bike Ride that takes place each year. This is sort of a mini version of that that is being done all around Massachusetts. And in this case, it's for young people to support cancer research. And it is at from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Middle School Complex on Carter Lane.
We have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
All in favor? Unanimous?